Eight minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Crocker, for joining us and for bringing your lunch with you.
Thank you, Chairman, for having this meeting on Farm Show.
You're welcome. Enjoy.
Way to go, Connor.
Thank you all for joining us for our regularly, or not normal time, but regularly scheduled board meeting. We will go ahead and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll be led today by Supervisor Shucklian, followed by a moment of silence.
Please join me in saluting our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right. Item number one on our agenda is Board of Supervisors Matters. I'd like to call it Supervisor Worthley. Oh, wait, he's not here yet. He's still... Oh, there he is. There he is. Welcome. You can go ahead and lead us in Supervisors Matters today, Mr. Worthley.
I have some reports to do.
Okay. Mr. Crocker?
Um, well, the ribeye sandwich is great. At Farm Show, I would encourage everyone to go partake and help out Sundale Schools. It's wonderful. Last week, I had, um, quite a, quite a week up in Sacramento on behalf of CSAC and the New Supervisors Institute, um, and it was, it was really great. Part of it, one of the things that I was able to do is I met with, uh, the Governor's Secretary on Natural Resources, John Laird, um, and we had a, had a nice discussion regarding Temperance Flat and, um, the need for it. He's very receptive, um, and he was, he was a lot more positive than I, than I was initially anticipating, which I think is a, is good for the project to move forward and make sure that we get the bond funds, uh, that are necessary to make sure that that becomes a reality. Um, and then also just meeting with other members, um, and, and getting to know them and, 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 uh, trying to work and find opportunities to, um, to, you know, bring Tulare County into a more of a, of a, you know, where, where other county supervisors, where we can partner and make sure that things get happening. And, uh, one of those individuals was, uh, Luis Alejo, uh, former Assemblyman, and, uh, he, uh, he apologized for, uh, for the, uh, the, I believe, the Redskins Bill was, was one of the bills he authored, which I wasn't aware of, or I didn't remember at the time. But I told him, I said, "Well, you know, your bill forgot about Rich Grove, and if you just drove through Rich Grove, you know, they are home of the Redskins, the elementary school district." So, anyway, that was a kind of aside.
Oh, really?
Yes, they are. So, you know, El- no, I was encouraging it. His, apparently, his wife is actually from Porterville. Yeah, so I didn't realize that. So, anyway, but it was, it was a good week, though.
Glad, glad to hear that. Supervisor Shucklian?
Well, I too attended the New Supervisors Institute, the second session, and, uh, one of, one of the sessions was very interesting. We had all the, uh, folks from the legislative branches of CSAC, the folks who, you know, we have our lobbyists, but the CSAC also does lobbying on behalf of the counties. And just some of the items that I want to share that they're working on, and Kyler, you can add anything else, is, um, kind of like a speed dating. Each person came around. Uh, Health and Human Services, uh, branch of CSAC is, is very busy and engaged now, and of course, the In-Home Support Services and the Affordable Care Act, uh, what's going on with that. So, that's some of the things that they are focusing on for, for use. Um, the Ag Environmental and Natural Resources is, uh, looking at marijuana regulation, also the, uh, Groundwater Sustainability Act and tree mortality. Um, what's interested of me, to me, is the Administrative of Justice, uh, branch has started, uh, it started last year before I was on the board, but they have a homeless task force that they are, uh, engaged with, with the League of California Cities. So, I'm gonna stay on top of that, and, uh, I can't be on the task force because it's already started, but I can certainly attend, uh, some of the sessions that they'll be having in the future. So, with our homeless task force, uh, getting started and off the ground, I think that'll, that'll be a good resource. And I guess the last one is the Finance Administration, things that they're working on. Um, interesting, there's a Assemblyman who's putting a bill forward to look at, um, expanding boards, uh, from five to seven members throughout California, and also having an elected, uh, CAO/CEO position. So, just some things that are going on that CSAC is, is looking at and engaged in. And then this, uh, this afternoon at 5:00 PM, I'll be speaking at and participating in the One Billion March in downtown Visalia to bring, uh, heightened awareness to, uh, domestic violence.
All right. Michael T.?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I got an email this morning, uh, from Kyle Lombardi, Kevin McCarthy's, uh, office, and they continue to press the Corps, uh, to get the spillway raised at Lake Success. This year is a real, uh, godsend to our area. We've got close to sixty-three thousand acre feet of water in that lake. That's the most that's been in there in over a decade. Uh, and if we had the spillway raised, we wouldn't be having so much concerns about the runoff if we could, if we could store another thirty thousand acre feet. Right now, it's about ten feet from going over the spillway. It, uh, it only holds eighty-two-five, and so it's at sixty, sixty-two, sixty-three. So, you can see where we're sitting right now. Still got good snowpack up there. We got more storms coming in. The release is about twenty-two hundred second feet, uh, down the river, which I drive across here. That doesn't seem like a whole lot. Uh, but, uh, we should only have, at this time of year, twelve, fifteen thousand acre feet in there for flood control. So, it's kind of a, uh, situation. We don't have the capacity that, uh, Terminus has. But of course, we don't have runoff areas as much as, uh, the Quay River, so... That's, that's all I have this morning.
We in better shape than Oroville?
Yeah, we're a lot better shape than Oroville. Our spillway, hey, we know our spillway works. We used it in sixty-six.
Supervisor Worthley wants a bite at the apple. Go ahead.
Yeah, well, I gotta just kinda get myself here together. Uh, I'm just gonna check and see if Supervisor Crocker was gonna be able to fill in for me at the Board Directors' meeting of, uh, next week.
Thursday. This Thursday.
This Thursday, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, right, this Thursday. Okay, so, um, I've got an airboard meeting on this Thursday, and so Kyler's kindly offered to fill in for me as the, as our alternate. Also, tomorrow, I have a meeting, uh, with the Isham Cemetery District folks. Uh, Isham is a beautiful little cemetery, but they have a, financially, they have some difficulties, so we're gonna have a conversation. Uh, this is something which, uh, LAFCO has taken a look at as we've examined different, uh, cemetery districts. And so I, I don't know what will come of the meeting, but the idea of maybe they might wanna look at consolidation with another district, or how they have plans to, to be able to meet their, their financial budget. It's not a huge problem because it's, they can't, you can't dig too big of a hole with the size of, of that type of a district, but nonetheless, it is a concern over time. And I think that's all I have to say, and a happy Valentine's Day to everyone.
Oh, that's very sweet of you. I, I'll take my Valentine's wishes from my wife and kids.
I was accept, I was going to accept you.
But, uh, anyways, um, just, uh, very busy in District Two this week with the Farm Show, and, uh, anybody who had the opportunity to drive, uh, to the show today knows how much help that, uh, South Tulare Interchange Area needs. Uh, Page was a disaster today. Um, it will be a disaster for the next two days, um, and it's a disaster at eight o'clock in the morning and a disaster at five in the evening. So, something needs to be done, and it's well on our, we are now on our way to getting something done about it, uh, thanks to the effort of TCAG. So, uh, sure look forward to that. But it is the Farm Show. Things are very busy with the show. Off to a great start. Opening ceremonies went very well this morning, uh, and if anybody is interested in seeing me, uh, do some celebrity cooking, I don't know why, it's just, maybe I am, uh, when you're born in Tipton and raised in Tulare all your life, maybe you're a, a celebrity. Who knows? But, uh, anyways, I'll be cooking with, uh, Chef Tommy from, uh, Cafe Tommy's in Visalia, so...
Actually, they asked all us first, and then they...
Yeah, they sell them.
You said no, and so they...
And, you know, you, you're supposed to, uh, I'm gonna bring this back to the board here. You're supposed to be quiet unless you got the microphone. But anyways, um, so, yeah, I hope everyone has a chance to make it out to the show. It's going great, and, uh, it's a huge impact on this area, and hopefully, uh, the visitors from all over the world that are here will take a time to, uh, or take some time to really, uh, see the, the jewels of our county that we have, uh, countywide, from Allen'sworth State Park up to, uh, the great Sequoia Forest. So, anyways, that's all I have today. We will now move on to item number two, which is a presentation and update from the Tulare County Professional Firefighters Association on the Fill the Boot event.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name's Hank Segwin. I'm with the Tulare County Professional Firefighters Association. I'm the president, and I'm honored to be here today to let you know how well of a fundraiser we had this year in Tulare County. Um, we had thirteen different locations out there, and, uh, I'm gonna let Candace, Candace is the Executive Director, um, for the Central Valley, but just give you a little hit. One of the busiest places that we had was Doyle Colony, which is Station Twenty, which you're well aware of, their water issues and all that. And the citizens of there were able to, um, donate five thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Wow.
Just in that one location. So, we're very pleased with that, and we just wanted to bring it here and show you some of the stuff. And Candace will go through all the details, and then what our efforts are gonna be for 2017. We're still striving to be the number one in the state.
Great.
Be up slowly. Candace?
Yeah, thank you so much, Hank. Um, I'm Candace Burns, and, uh, as Hank had said, I'm the Director of Central California Chapter. Um, I am a huge fan of Tulare County because my husband and I, uh, were raised in Porterville. I know we've mentioned Porterville a few times, and, uh, my husband was a firefighter, um, for Porterville City and continues to be a medic, uh, fire medic up north. And so firefighters are near and dear to my heart, um, as is the Muscular Dystrophy Association. Um, muscle disease is also very close to me because my aunt unfortunately has been living with ALS for twenty-two years, um, which is why my husband and I started volunteering ages ago. And, um, that's when I first started understanding what muscle disease really is and, and how much it really impacts our community. And, um, once I, I met Tulare County Professional Fire Association, they really blew my mind. Um, I had coordinated, uh, with, with Hank and Eric Withrow in their event, and it was just astounding to learn that in our local communities in Tulare County, um, that they're raising thousands and thousands of dollars more than some of the richest communities in the state. And, um, just in 2016, out of every fire association in the state of California, they ranked number eight. And they are fundraising more than Marin County, San Diego, Orange County, some of the most lucrative areas in the state of California. And, and our communities here in Tulare are giving, and, and they're helping support our local services, our families here in central California. And, and I'm just so honored and privileged to work with, um, Tulare County. And I have to say that a lot of, uh, what they're able to accomplish definitely comes from the top down. Um, uh, they have phenomenal support from their chiefs, their administration, um, to be able to do what they do. And, um, so I thank you, um, chiefs that are here today. I appreciate all the support that you provide. Um, I did want to share that in the last three years, just at a glance, Tulare County has raised almost one hundred thousand dollars out of Tulare County.
Wow.
That is just, it's astounding. And when you think about the services that provides, um, just to send a local camper to camp is eight hundred dollars, and that's including a camp counselor, medical staff. Um, it's phenomenal. And in the last three years, they sent one hundred and twenty-four disabled children to a special needs summer camp, which is, which is outstanding. And when you look at the amount of research that they're putting in, um, MDA's putting into actually finding a cure for muscle disease. We're not just putting Band-Aids anymore on muscle disease. We actually just released three amazing pharmaceuticals that are actually slowing the progression of muscle disease. So, if you know anyone that is fighting muscle disease, whether it's ALS, um, MD, maybe a child with Duchenne muscular dystrophy, it's, it's amazing. And your local heroes, even though they're out there paving the way for your 911 calls, your traffic emergencies, they're still finding time to serve their community, um, not only in disastrous emergencies, but in philanthropy out of the kindness of their hearts. And they are just simply outstanding. And what's so amazing to me, too, is that I'm showing up to their Fill the Boot campaign, spanning across thirteen locations from Dinuba to Tulare, um, Porterville, and every city in between. And in 2016, they made over thirty-seven thousand dollars. And I'm thinking, you know, watching these guys bust their buns sweating from the, their helmets, you know, really rocking and rolling for muscular dystrophy, how can you beat that out again? How can you make a difference? And so I'm just talking to my boot coordinators, Hank and Eric, and they said, "What can we do to make a difference still? We wanna beat out last year. We wanna be number one. We don't wanna be number eight. We wanna put Tulare County on the map. There is something big happening between San Francisco and LA, and it's us. It's our community. It's our firefighters and our amazing people that we have here." So, Eric said, "Well, you know, what else can we do?" And we, we chatted, and they wanna do a virtual Fill the Boot. So, why not just bust your buns on the streets and get those donations? But nowadays, even myself included, I don't always carry cash in my wallet. I want everything on my card or via PayPal or on my app. So, they are going to roll out a virtual Fill the Boot website so we can have big business leaders and small-town business owners support us, even online. Everything is social media nowadays, and we're still gonna get those amazing, um, cowboys and agricultural field workers coming at five o'clock in the morning saying, "Yeah, I'll, I'll give you a dollar. I'll dump my change in your ashtray," or "from my ashtray into your boot," and they'll accept it. Uh, but now we're, we're kind of expanding, and, and their goal is to meet that, beat that thirty-seven thousand dollars last year. And, I mean, if they only raised six hundred more dollars in the last three years, that's over one hundred thousand dollars coming from the citizens of Tulare County. Uh, we have such a diverse community. So, with that said, um, I'd love to just hand out, uh, a newsletter which shows the rankings in the state of California for each of you, as well as a small letter that I wrote, um, with the, um, income that they've raised over the last three years. So, with that said, I appreciate your support. I hope that when we, uh, release our virtual Fill the Boot page, that you folks will, um, help support them in reading their, and each, uh, sorry, meeting their goals. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'd like to point out one other thing. Um, last year, we came to you in October for pink t-shirts, and, um, we were able to give five hundred dollars locally to, um, Cuiada Delta. They run a program for, um, people that, uh, women that don't have insurance, uh, that stuff, that can't afford it. We were able to give them a check. So, this year, we're gonna kick off that campaign a little early and try and get the t-shirts out there, so you'll see us again on that. Um, that was one of our goals, to keep it locally, and they were able to do it. It's a very, um, Amy probably is familiar with the program, but it's worked out really well for us. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation. All right. Uh, we're gonna now move on to item number three on our agenda, which is Public Comment. I have a request from, uh, Greg Gomez, but that is related to item seven. We'll take that up at that time, uh, when we get to the consent calendar. Um, and then I also have a request from a gentleman named Jason Britt, who doesn't know his address, city, state, zip, or topic that he's speaking about, but he would like to speak. So, go ahead, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jason Britt, HHA Agency Director. I just wanted to take just two quick minutes to update you on, um, to remind the public and, and the board that we will be conducting our, uh, listening sessions for the Wellness Center on Lover's Lane next Tuesday and Wednesday evening at seven o'clock at Cafe Two Ten. We have mailed out the postcards. We have been advertising on radio and also through a press release, so hopefully the word is getting out so that individuals who are interested can come and share, uh, their thoughts with us. And the second item, I just wanted to give you a quick update, was on, and it was timely with Supervisor Shucklian's report about, uh, where we are in the formation of our homeless task force. So, on December twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, the board approved, uh, an establishment of a homeless task force that will serve as a subcommittee to this board. Um, unfortunately, due to some of the holidays and some of that, the recruitment process kinda got off to a rocky start, but we, um, have released a press release, and we are actively outreach to all of the, um, the entities that are named as seats on that, um, task force to, um, engage them in choosing their representatives, getting the application process completed, and so we can get, um, all of that information collected and thoroughly, um, reviewed and vetted, and then to this board for approval to seat the task force. So, I just wanted to let you know that that's where we are in the process. Uh, we haven't forgot. It's not off the radar. Um, it just is gonna take us a little bit of time with, um, having eighteen entities at the table, um, getting all of that information together. So, I just wanted to, uh, take that time to just update you and let you know where we are, and, uh, appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comments today?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Reed Shanky with Resource Management Agency, and, uh, joining me Chief Norman. Um, I think you spoke to the right person regarding a break in the weather pattern for our Farm Show here, but we have been dealing with some rains, and we wanted to just provide a quick update on the last week's storms. Um, we did get pretty good rainfall through last week. This was a precipitation forecast, but it turned out to be pretty accurate. We saw about two inches of rain in the foothills, and then three-quarters of an inch in the valley floor. Um, much of the heavier rains, uh, as you noted earlier, up in that northern, uh, California area, up in Oroville location in particular. Um, our main concern here was we did have a large amount of snowpack at low elevation, and these were, uh, very warm storms. So, we saw quite a bit of stream flow coming down through the valley, um, as a result of that. And a couple pictures here, low water crossing Yokel Creek. Uh, doesn't very often get water across it, so this was kind of a high, high activity. And these are just a, kind of, general pictures of locations where we did see heavy rain flows. This is, uh, Route Eighty-eight at the White River. We actually ended up cutting the road back to allow waters to flow through there so that they wouldn't, uh, overtop their banks and flood the adjacent properties. We'll get back in there and fix the road as soon as the, uh, the flows are reduced. Um, saw some damage, or some, uh, debris caught up here at Deer Creek. It rode one ninety-two, kinda typical of a lot of the locations throughout the valley. Um, we did see a, a rock slide, um, again, kinda typical of our more foothill regions, some of the lower traveled roads. This was on Dry Creek at mile post eleven. And then one of the bigger activities that we did see was, uh, the Cuiada River. Um, water levels rose very quickly through here, and this is going over one of the bridges, um, on the north fork of the Cuiada. And Chief Norman will go into a little bit more detail about some of the activities at that location in particular. Um, but we did see, in about a forty-eight hour period, the, uh, lakes, uh, Lake Cuiada reservoir rose about twenty feet. So, that's a lot of water. Um, I think in the same time period, forty-eight hours, Success rose about thirteen feet. So, a lot of water, um, primarily from the snow melt, but caused by that warm rain. Um, and then here's a few hours later, at that same location, the bridge, the water levels dropped, uh, dropped pretty precipitously, pretty rapidly as well there.
Good afternoon. Um, Tuesday afternoon, we were completely overwhelmed with storm-related calls. Um, we had the issues of Bailey Bridge, as well as the Airport Bridge on Queer River Drive and Three Rivers. Um, we made the decision to activate the EOC Tuesday night. Uh, we kept that open until Wednesday after, late afternoon, uh, just with the amount of, uh, calls for emergency services out there. Um, during this time, we activated our Swift Water Rescue Team. Our Swift Water Rescue Teams, uh, kind of...
Sorry, Charles.
You need to get that?
No.
She's, uh, rather rude, uh, one of my colleagues, so I apologize. On, on her behalf, that was pretty bad, Chief. You're doing a great job with your presentation, though.
Thank you.
Carry on.
Carry on.
So, with that, um, this Swift Water Rescue Team is a joint effort between Three Rivers Volunteer Company and the county, and lo and behold, right after we opened the EOC, we got a call for a person stuck in a vehicle on Queer River Drive. They'd backed out of the driveway and into this. Um, we activated the team. As you can see, they got suited up there, uh, set up their rigging, got ready for the rescue. Um, and with the flows, the increase, luckily, this was, uh, probably about three hours after the peak time of flows during that incident. Uh, we were able to get in there, uh, put a rescue in there, um, get the gentleman extricated out from the rear of the vehicle, uh, through the sliding rear window. Thank goodness for a sliding rear window, no additional vehicle damage. And we were able to pull him out, uh, pull him to safety, um, evaluate him. He did not need any, uh, pre-hospital care. Um, sometimes timing is everything with this. Uh, we were in the right place at the right time, had the right resources, and, uh, we're continuing to prepare for the next round of storms. So, I would answer any questions you have.
Any questions or phone rings?
What was he thinking to try to drive across that bridge?
You know, as with most emergency medical calls, I really don't have the state of mind. They needed our help.
Yeah, well, good job, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, Mr. Chairman, just as a perspective, we were talking about amounts of water, and the Oroville Dam, which I'm sure many of you have been following this, that story, um, which would be absolutely catastrophic if, if there was a, a problem with the emergency spillway where they rode it. It could be thirty feet of water. That reservoir holds over three million acre feet of water. They're releasing a hundred thousand acre feet right now per second. I'm sorry, second feet, this was being released, a hundred thousand. That equates to two hundred thousand acre feet a day. Two hundred thousand out of one reservoir in California, two hundred thousand acre feet a day are being released. And, you know, we're, we're looking at on the, on the, uh, our Temperance Flat Project, if we had it, because the, uh, San Joaquin River is releasing about seven mil, seven thousand second feet. So, that's over, that's about twelve, thirteen thousand acre feet a day are being released down the San Joaquin River. If we had the reservoir there now, we could be holding every bit of that. We've released over three hundred and fifty thousand acre feet so far. This would be one of those years, we could go over a million acre feet. We should have been a number of those years over the course of time. So, anyway, just to keep it in perspective, a lot of water in California, and more on the way. So, here we go.
All right, thank you. Any additional public comments, sir? Both microphones work. Please state your name and address.
James Drager, nine-seven-one Bondway, surrounded by Lindsay. I'm here today because I have some major concerns about ambulance services in this county, especially where I live. I've experienced ambulances getting lost, subsequent calls for emergency services, arguments with nine-eleven operators. They seem to know more than me. I live in the zone. They do not. We have a major problem in Lindsay. Streets without naming what they are. Those signs are missing. We've had relatives and friends come to our house, and they, even with a GPS, they get lost. We have to guide them in with the help of landmarks, railroad tracks, Willie's Market, whatever it takes to get them to our house. We have had two of our family members pass away recently. The daughter of ours, about a, a little over a year, she had a problem with diabetes, but that wasn't what took her down. Kidney failure, stage four cancer. My wife talked with someone about what to do. She was instructed on how to give compression. I made it to where the daughter lived, saw my wife. My wife was arguing with the nine-eleven operators, "Where is the ambulance? Where's the ambulance?" Well, unbeknownst to us, the ambulance that was first called arrived about forty minutes late. After another call, resulting in an ambulance that arrived before the late one. This is obscene. I think whenever we have a problem in this county, and I know Area One, officers, sheriff's deputies have to come from Cal- Nelson. That could be the only guy on duty to represent all of the people in the county in that area. I think someone needs to, uh, get on the ball and figure out what's gonna happen here. People's lives are at stake. I just don't think it's working. And now we're down, what, one ambulance service yet? Mr. Crocker knows. And are we trying to float that thing just because no one else wants to serve my area of the valley? I think that's a shame. Maybe it's like, uh, some communities, Lindsay needs to have its own ambulance service. They have fire trucks. One of them, I guess, is broken down, too. They all know first aid. There's people out there doing multiple jobs. The quality of the service is what I'm concerned about. So, I will, I'm going to arrange a meeting time with Mr. Crocker, and so we can start nailing down some things. A lot of people don't complain, but I've reached the level, I have a wife who was, survived cancer four times. I don't want an ambulance complete to Dallas. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Is there anybody else wishing to speak under public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public comment period. Uh, we will move forward, and Mr. Cro- Crocker, I know you will be following up with your constituent.
Yes, we've spoke last week and we will be meeting in the future.
Good. Okay, now we're gonna move on to the consent calendar, I do have a request to, for comment on item seven, clarification on item six, I'd like to go to item six first.
I'm gonna pull item six and bring it before the board on the 28.
Okay, so item six is going to be removed and brought back at a later date. Item seven is an item, Darla, if you wanna present on the item, just highlight a little bit and then there is some public comment related to that from Greg Gomez.
Good afternoon, Chairman Vanderpool and Board of Supervisors and CEO. I'm really happy to come with you today to bring this sub-recipient agreement so we can get some grant funding from the Community Development Blog, grant money that Farmersville received to open our Farmersville branch. So we're once again in the city of Farmersville, providing services for our three-year period. We've been working really hard with Farmersville for, it looks like about three years now, me personally, two years as of last week, so I'm really proud of where we've come with this. It's a good agreement and we're sharing responsibility for the building and we're going to bring in some good staff to bring some really good services. We're working really closely with a group called Leo Conmigo in Farmersville as well, who is trying to bring more support to the literacy services within the city and they've been my backbone to get this through and my support and they're gonna be planning a wonderful opening program we're hoping to have on April 22nd.
Great, thank you Darla. Greg?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I just wanted some time to thank everyone that's been a part of this project and to give you some background, since 1995, Farmersville has been without a county library and between 1995 and 2008, there was a group of volunteers that tried to keep it running, headed by Carolyn Benavides, who is Leonel Benavides, a council member in the city of Farmersville, his wife, and in 2008, it closed. And since then, I believe that there was one attempt to try and reopen it in 2012, but it hasn't been since the last, I would say, three to four years with this creation of Leo Conmigo, which is Read Me Farmersville, that was created from nonprofits that wanted to make a positive impact in the community on one or two major issues. And the issue that we wanted to tackle was literacy in children between birth and three and third grade. And so we, a group of us formed this, one of the goals that we set was to reopen the library and it's taken us three years to do that. And I'm just gonna read off some names of the associations that have helped us, the city of Farmersville, of course, the county library, the Farmersville Unified School District, Read For Life, First Five Tulare County, California Teaching Fellows Foundation, the Tulare Kings Hispanic Chamber, Family Healthcare Network, Hands On Central California, Health and Human Services, thank you Jason, your staff have been amazing, IT, the IT Department, because during this, the first challenge that we got in trying to open a library was, and which Darla brought to our attention, we needed internet service. Well, the community center was built on the wrong side of Farmersville, it's in a place where broadband doesn't really exist and the other half is served by AT&amp;T. So IT was really instrumental in trying to give us that functionality of that internet access and which we are in the process of flipping the switch to turn it on right now. Tulare County Office of Education and Pro Youth Heart, and there's a couple of other ones that I may have missed, but those were the major ones. This wouldn't have happened without the help of our many partners and this is one of those projects where you can say it does take a group effort and thank you for being one of those groups now who was leading that push. I don't know if Mr. Jansons wanted to say anything. I'm not able to speak on behalf of the city, I'm a former mayor, city council member, but I'm not here on behalf of the city council. Is there anything you wanted to say?
I would just add a couple of brief comments to thank the board and particularly Darla for her efforts. It has been a long haul to work through the CDBG regulations and work through HCD in Sacramento, but we're very excited about the opening of the new library and, you know, we are looking forward to this being just one of many partnerships that we can embark on as we go forward, so thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate your comments, sure.
Question, that's for Darla, I think, Darla, I noticed that, I mean, it's wonderful that we have the CDBG grant that's gonna be paying for three years of the service of the labor costs.
Labor costs, yes, that's correct.
And there's no net cost through the library fund.
Just, there's gonna be a small thing to pay for utilities and that's to make sure that we have a solid relationship with the city of Farmersville.
I guess my, the reason I asked the question is, because I don't think the goal is to have a library for three years in Farmersville and then no longer have a library in Farmersville. What is the thinking, your thinking, what is the thinking of the community in Farmersville about how we make this something which is gonna be longstanding?
Well, our goal, that's once we're in there, is to assess how we are impacting the city as we're there, continue to working with the groups and Leo Conmigo and making a good assessment of how we would be looking in the future and how our funding would be at that time depending on the economy. Our goal is to actually be in Farmersville long-term. We have a great facility in their community center, it's a beautiful location, really close to an elementary school and a park and with the Boys and Girls Club next door, so it's really a prime place to be, so I don't see it ending unless it's a financial reason. So, but John and I have already committed to having conversations, at least by year or two, to start talking about what long-term might look like.
It's truly a valuable resource for the community and I know that it will be very, very welcome. Would you like another bite of the apple, sir?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just wanted to add one more thing. You know, we've gone through two librarians during the process, we've gone through three city managers, three school superintendents, and each one that has stepped into the role has been wonderful and they've really picked up the ball where it, where it could have easily have been dropped. So I do wanna thank Darla and John for all their assistance in trying to get us our library.
Sound like a poisoned position.
No, they're here to stay, they can't leave.
Anyone have any additional comments or items they would like to remove from the consent calendar? If not, the chair will consider a motion, except for item six, which will be coming back at another date. Vote for approval, less item six.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Anis, a second by Supervisor Crocker, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, Farmersville, you have a library now, congratulations. See, whoever said librarians were boring, I mean, round of applause, new libraries and stuff, you're not boring. You're a party animal, Darla, you're a party animal. Keep the party going in Farmersville. All right, next, we're gonna move on now to the untimed section of our meeting agenda. Item number 12 is a request from the Board of Supervisors to adopt the Order of Adjournment of the Board of Supervisors' meetings to specified times and locations as follows. I'm not seeing any board reps coming forward to present this item, so I will present this. This is basically just the formality to, I know, it's a request from the board, it had to happen this way, but I wasn't really expecting it, so no, we're good. This was something I'd outlined in the state of the county, I just have never made a request on my own agenda item, but that's good. In the state of the county, we talked about having evening meetings, five evening meetings during the course of the year, one in each supervisory district. This is just the formality to formalize the locations and timings of those meetings. Anybody have any questions or comments? This is an action item.
One question about the community, a meeting in the, in the city of Tulare, are we gonna be having to pay rent to use the facilities in Tulare?
Apparently, it's coming out of your check.
Your good works funds, very good, all right, okay.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, comments from anyone in the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for action. Move to approve. I have a motion by Supervisor Crocker.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Strucklian, please vote. All right, it passed unanimously, I was expecting it to be a 3-2 vote against-
I was gonna vote no, but I went ahead.
All right, well, thank you for indulging me, I appreciate it. That concludes our open session, council, do we have need for closed session?
We do, Mr. Chairman. On the regular calendar or agenda, items A through C and then on the addendum, item D, I do not expect any announcements of action out of closed session.
Thank you. And please remember, we are dark next week, so we'll see you in a couple of weeks.